Panginoong Diyos na makapangyerno, mahabagin at mapagtala. Binadakila at pinagdaramal ka namin sa pangpitipon na ito, ang pagbubukas ng fourth regular session ng Bangsa Moro Transitional Authority Parliament. Invoqueation, try people invoqueation. First by the Mufti of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region, the Grand Mufti of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region, Mufti Aborayra Odasan through Zoom. Followed by Honorable MP Susana Nayaating for Christian and Honorable MP Milanyo Nama for IT. Now may we recognize the Grand Mufti of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Mindanaw to lead the invoqueation for Muslim, followed by for Christian and for IT. MP, uh, mufti of the Bangsa Moro Transitional Authority, Mufti Aborayra Odasan. We can now start the invoqueation.
(speaking Spanish) Alhamdulillah, Rabb al-a'lamin. Rahmane, rahimie, Maliki, omid din. Iya ka na'bud, wa iya ka nastagin. Edina siraat al-mustaqim. Siraat alladzina an'amta alaihim. Waelil maghbu, wa alaihim, wa rab'adli ami. We bless you Almighty Allah, for your benevolence and blessing upon all of us. This auspicious occasion, the ceremonial opening of the fourth regular Bangsa Moro parliamentary session, for you are our Almighty Creator and Sustainer. Ya Allah, O Almighty Allah, keep these tapes of our leaders, as well as the entire members of the Bangsa Moro Parliament firm and strong, there and the more, the development of our motherland, along the realization of our noble aspiration for meaningful peace, justice, security, and harmony over our Bangsa Moro society. For you are the most magnanimous, the most generous. Ya Allah, O Almighty Allah, strengthen the unity, solidarity, and integrity of the members of the Bangsa Moro Parliament the course of their deliberation, providing them your guidance towards the right direction under the Spirit of the Bangsa Moro moral governance or none will go astray away from the truth under your divine guidance. Glory be to you Almighty Allah, if our effort more diavigorous in uh, surmounting and overcoming all obstacles and challenges, in keeping your word supreme, for you are our Almighty Patron and Protector. Ya Allah, O Almighty Allah, may not on us burden beyond our capacity to bear, name us not if we forget, fall into error. Pass over our faults, grant us forgiveness, for you are of forgiving, most exalted in might. (speaking Spanish) Alhamdulillah, Rabb al-a'lamin.
MP Susana, for Christian invoqueation. Yes.
(speaking Spanish)
(speaking in Bengali) 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 (speaking in Bengali)
For the singing of the Philippine National Anthem by the singing of the Bangsa-Moro to be performed by Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim in Mindanow BAR quietly, we request the Bangsa-Moro
(singing in Bengali) 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 (singing in Bengali)
We now introduce the speech of the Bangsa-Moro Valley. We now are pleased that the party can enter to deliver the speech.
(speaking in Bengali) Alhamdulillah, Rabbi al-alamin, wa salatu wa salaam ala rabbiina Muhammad wa ala alihi wa saqrihi ajmain amma ba'ad. Ahmadar Reis Rodrigo Rito Riti, Reis Jamhuriya Pilipino, Tahibul Ma'ali, Ahud Balabag Ibrahim. Reis Reis Wajarah, Hukbati Banjamuru, Adet Asid, Utuhadis Al-Burlaman, Ali Ruyan Balindog. Ashbabu Sa'ada, Asaratil Wajarah, Awdaa Burlaman, Hukumat Banjamuru, Iswani Ulah, Al Afadid, Al Umarau, Wa Qartu Hukubatil Malsalaya, Afadat Wal Beladiyat, Ayuhal Iswa Al Kiraam. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Adimahar alaina Shahur Ramadan al-mubarak. Waladzi ta'alamna piyakhilaihi al-makhabbate wal-ifaa wal-tarahum wal-ataa wa khuful khairi bil-akharim. Anadu allah shuhanahu wa ta'ala al-taboo'ul wa ayamunna alaina biyakhiri wal-brakat. Ija kanalijaman alaina anuqabuka ala al-ukhouti wal-makhabbate wal-wahda ba'udun nadr ala intima atina siyasia wa nataiya intikabat. Ayuhasada, ya'ibu alaina anadu filaafat bil-iraaati siyasia al-wabiyah bil-anal maraxata xalia pera'ul al-ithihad wal-ammal ma'an wa antakuna himmatuna raku kafaati siyasia wal-insimaiyah wal-ithihadiyah. Nuhanni'u awdaa Al-Burlaman ala juddehem wa bitihadihem wa tafaniinihem fil-ammal waladzi asmar ala'ay timadi arba'wisariina mashro'uan kanunian watamreenu niatainu wa isnenu arba'inu mashroo bil-karari shalif isaab itahatit itakalu'atihi na'fu al-hukuma al-akhraqiyah na'fu al-hukuma al-akhraqiyah. Wonahnu matapaham innal-juhudal mabzourata min-yami awda'il burlaman wal-wajarah wal-mas'oolina la'taki wa la'taki liya't ihyatiya jati'mu bitainan bihadihil patra al-kasir. Innal-amalad da'ub innal-amalad da'ub wa'shajaa'ta wal-mushabarata wa'shabar adaatina lirusul ilanidamil adala'til hakiti waladzi yaktayuhu ka'abmur. Bil-haja te'atamata'u ka'abuna bibaitin amilatin watahatit ta'adumi wal-istiar. Fa nusakir nusakir ampusana bil-itsijamating wal-mas'ooliyatin ayabu akata'irayin bil-anana bil-anana mutabuna al-adaidi bil-kiniyati wal-yaudati al-mutawakiyat katirwakti mahadat. Yaku'ur Rasulullah Shallallahu Alaihi Wasallam ul-nukum ra'in yaku'ur ra'in mas'oolun andro'iyati. Karuwaratil hadis an-Abi Hurayratul Abiyallahu anhu qala izab bi'ati l-amanatu pantadris sa'a. Qala, kai fa'ilaatuha ya Rasulullah? Qala Rasulullah Shallallahu Alaihi Wasallam ija'atuha ya Rasulullah qala, iza'usmi dal-amaru iza'usmi dal-amaru ilaga'ri afrihi pantadris sa'a. Ra'ahul Mukhari qala Rasulullah Shallallahu Alaihi Wasallam inna asadannasi azaban yomal tiyamati rajulun asrakahu allahu pi'huqnihi wa adxala alaihi juru pi'ajrihi. Bil-hajal meqamma nadu'ul yami'ul wajualai nadu'ul yami'ul wajualai al-ulamau wa sharatwal duamaa siyasii wa yami'ul at-atiyab isaab Banjamuru ilaa an-nas'aa yami'an bil-ithihad al-a'mna wa tanmi'at athit idhari wal-rafa'ya. Wajihu tukri mila'i ta'ala thuma lisabina al-fadib al-adam al-da'ub bil-ibiyati wal-idaratil reij firti bitamjiri patati hukumatil intikaliya wal-ithwalinah bil-dual al-arabiati wal-islamiya wal-dual asadika aladzi aladzi nasanadu ipa'aksa'ab mu ma'akusdu bil-super di-munaddamatu alamiyat islamiya wal-umumul waththamilah wal-ithihadil aurubi wa'gherihamin al-munaddamatu il-hutumiyatil makhtar wa'gheril hutumiyati bil-gharamatu il-insaniya. Anadu allah ayamunna alaina fethihi wal-ayatihii watovitihii wa'amiran wa'bihukumi asotatu il-mufawlati li bil-mo'gi bil-kaluna u'linu'ana intitaku ahdihir jerza. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
We will now proceed on the beating of the agro for the opening of the fourth regular session by the Bangsa-Moro only to be accompanied by the Bangsa-Moro Chief Minister Ahmad Barawan Ibrahim. We request our media to take coverage of this historical event. The beating of the agro signals the opening of the fourth regular session of the Bangsa-Moro Transitional Authority Parliament. Before we proceed, we would like to acknowledge the following persons. Those who attend physically the mayor-elect of Potabato City, Muhammad Ali Cruz Gilatus Batavaro and the vice mayor-elect of Potabato City, Johari Coach Abu and the Westminster Foundation for Democracy represented by Captain Manu Ubaid and company. And guests in the room are the following the Asia Foundation through Noray Dapto the MIIG Minister, Minister Nadib Sinarindung and the Minister of Labor and Employment, Minister Mosemil Isala. For this matter, Mr. Speaker, we now call for the order of the fourth regular session of the DCP Parliament. we now call for the order of the Port Regular Session of the DTR Parliament. The members of the DTR Parliament, the Honorable Abbas Akmad, Abbas Haron, Abbas Ertenay,
Present, Your Honor.
Abbas Pasit Sarin,
Present.
Abu Majid, Adiyon Jaurahman Alontto, Ahang Abdula, Alagli Alaisa, Alau Dithais, Ali Ibrahim, Ali Lanang Junior, Ali Edimapad, Alil Seshat, Amoluto Swarto, Ampatuwan Baitan, Anayati Susana, Asmawil Muslimah, Kalidong Ali Pangalian, Parahani Domino迪, Basman Anna Karhata, Burak Khan Abrahad, Tandaw Bay Malih, Tandamun Latip Maisara, Yahla Musa, Dipatuwan Sabruna, Yubray Ma Ahud, Ismail Haji Agdolages, Gayak Abdullah, Geraed Doord, Asim Abdullah, Hassan Atimim, Iqbal Mahager,
President.
Ismail Rasul, Tajuri Raisa, Jakilan Muslimin,
Present.
Jakire Alwakin, Haron Baynon, Nidastan Muslini, Loong Don Mustafa, Lorena Ose Ribani, Makako Abdurauf, Makapaar Abdullah, Makaraya Jamel, Makasalong Marjani, Magoda Datu Datuk Adafu, Mantawil Malik, Mastura Datuk Tukau, Mastura Siti Syahara, Mawali Lamin Bahar, Mitimbang Datuk Midbantau, Mitmo Rasul, Mujahid Abdul Mukmin, Munio Susai, Makasamupaidah, Pak Abdullah Hab, Pangadaman Abila Margarita, Ramus Jamila, Rembang Sultan Edris Anasir, Zakarmu Dayaw, Salendat Say, Salial Say, Saliga Romeo, Salik Ali, Sanki Ali, Sani Punduma,
President.
Satar Alzad, Semah Omar Anasir, Semah Romeo, Chek Said, Silongan Ayda, Sulaiman Ali, Tagopay Salih, Anmabil, Udyasahih, Ulama Milanyo, Usman Asfar, Yakob Muhammad, Yuray Kane Arsiso. Now, I would like to sign, Mr. Speaker, with fifty-seven members of the parliament physically responded to the call and thirteen responded via Zoom. We have a total of seventy members of the parliament responded both physical and virtual. We therefore certify, Mr. Speaker, that there is the presence of the forum. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. But there is a forum to share the presence of the forum. Your leader, yes, before we proceed to the next DDT, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker, we would like to acknowledge the presence of the Minister of the Health and Investment and Tourism Minister of Lengendi Kabik and the Department of Transportation and Communication Minister of Bigson Hermoso, Mr. Speaker. The next advocate, Mr. Speaker, will be the address by the Speaker of the Parliament before the Bangsa Moro Transportation Authority.
This eminent by Khalifa Osman Nando, the deputy vice-cabor. This is the Chalisi Chief Minister, Ahud Salahal Ibrahim. Members of the cabinet, officers and other members of the Bangsa Moro Transportation Authority. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Three years ago, we started the journey of the Bangsa Moro. We were full of hopes then. We are so much full of hopes now. What with how far we have managed to come? What with the countless spirited exchanges of sinister intentions from everyone? Government of the day and members of the parliament. What with the confluence of everyone's vision? Very much shaped by decades of blood, sweat and tears. We are at the pinnacle of this journey. It has truly been an honor for all of us to have been part of these voyages carving the future of the Bangsa Moro as we have been fighting for way before. Tremendous toll does not cap what we have to face these past years. Not that we didn't expect it. After all, we have been fighting for what is right and what we deserve for a good part of this country's history. From the time it was found by colonizers to the time the country was established and now that we are continuing the people's aspiration for a better Philippines. We have been fighting for recognition ever since. We never assumed to be entitled to anything. We simply wanted to write the roles of history to start their list with the recognition that we are a fundamental part of the forging of this country's very identity. The same challenge remains. But it is beyond question that we have now achieved something fundamental and the order of the day is to build on this milestone. Strengthen the institutions and forge far-reaching plans for the region and in the process make our national leaders and everyone realize how we could contribute to the whole country's holistic development. Inevitably, therefore, we had to engage politically. Much of our work after all is political. As we commit ourselves to public service, we have also set our eyes on a vision and with that vision, it is but imperative to take a chance on what we perceive at any given time what we think will serve as a good mechanism for us. And as we did before, we choose according to experience, according to history. It was not popular before. It proved to be not popular a choice in this election. We choose wrong politically. But just like before, it should not deter us from working hand in hand with the new national government. Who could have thought we'll be reaching this far under the Duterte administration? The whole time we have been working with the leaders of the previous dispensation. Still, cooperation with President Duterte has worked wonders. It did not only allow us to show we can cooperate towards the achievement of what is good for Filipinos. It was an opportunity for us to show our brand of service to our people in the region. I am sure even another opportunity, the new national leadership will only see a partner in us. The visionary and the chief minister and the more Islamic liberation front leaders will surely coincide with a seed was leader in President Bongo Marco. Even just a short meeting, if I may be so bold to recommend, will surely set things right moving forward. At the end of the day, we know our place in overall mechanism of the national government. I am confident at the same time that the national leaders understand the value of a continuously working Bangsa Moro autonomous president. Having established all this, we shall be speedfast supporters of President Marco. We are aware no doubt that our significance only comes with a perfect legacy and institution that is designed and strengthened consistent with our identity as a people. I can refer with nothing other than baroness. Yes, we were given a special place in our country's constitution. But having an institution that truly encapsulates our integrity has only been achieved now. For that, we only owe it ourselves to remain true to our calling. Serbans extraordinary for our people as we have shown to many weathering all kinds of difficulties along the way. I thought of this as I recall the preeminent leadership shown by our colleagues in the regional government. Inevitable is this kind of remarkable leadership that they have recently been recognized by our people as they were elected to key positions in public service. I am honored as I will forever be grateful to observe alongside them who I now mention for everyone to give due recognition. Honorable Datu Tukao Mastora City Naomi Sultan Tadarah Bagindara. Honorable City Sahara Mastora Congresswoman Potabato City and First District of Bagindara. Honorable Ali Said Salih Vice Governor Paritav. Honorable Ja Alon Toadyo Congressman First District Nanau Delso. Honorable Adape Toe Magodadato Naomi of Pandan, Bagindara. They are five of our colleagues here in parliament who are now about to take on a new role in public service. As our colleagues, they made curious talents and wisdom of their time with the parliament and shown how it is to actually serve our people and for that they have stood out and now needed by the people to be closer to them. I will not be surprised if in the near future many more of our brethren will be taking on the next challenge and sharing the country what the real worth is. As I have already mentioned, we have faced and have been shaped by a lot more than what tremendous toll can describe. I say that without any equivocation. As we know by experience what sacrifice is, how we have endured discrimination and how we continue to be underestimated by many. All this supports for us a whole authority or learning by living, a true school for hard jobs. Meanwhile, there is so much more to be done ahead of us. If I may reiterate, our legacy of a strong institution has yet to be completed. We have already accomplished many of the fundamental implements or laws needed to shift to different offices and departments and organizing our bureaucracy. Our service never ends. We have to enrich what we have already undertaken and show how best could be put into use in that whoever takes over from us already have enough tools at their disposal. Last year, we have inaugurated Bangsa Moro's development plan. Let us keep our eye on the goal, as I say, and be reminded of the objectives as we have set for ourselves and for our people. Constant review, monitoring and assessment is in order so that we may be able to act on additional needed action to see through this plan. I know we have given so much thought and energy in formulating this plan, but foresight is essential. We have to see the end and anticipate the next step. Again, with the anticipation of the next generation of leaders. There all, we are but initiators here. We serve as catalysts for a more substantive future as we count on the young leaders to come. Most recently, not only me and my family witnessed success of young working professionals and lead them in the family. Of course, I could not help but feel fulfillment and pride. Looking back on the other hand, it led me to imagine a future of the Bangsa Moro with young leaders full of vigor and brilliance taking on the challenge of leadership and forging a much more progressive and prosperous region and country. With the many other successful young leaders with their many equally proud parents and families in the region, this imagination came more than a quen becomes reality in the near future. If we continue to do well with our mandate, nothing is impossible. The political, economic and social environment will surely result in nothing short of greatness we have known and dreamed for our people. will surely result in nothing short of greatness we have known and dreamed for our people. If I may just add a little more important detail. The regional government has continued to work closely with the local government. Local governments are hotlineers, but it is rather proponent over the country. The creation of the Bangsamoro region is our advantage as we are able to amalgamate and work together as a bigger, more comprehensive whole. This way, we do not only pool our resources and force together. More important in the process, we are strengthening our bond with our people in the region. Together, our plans, no doubt, will be not easier to be made in reality. It is also paramount to work closely with the national government. The visions that came with the hostings have passed. We should now be poised to be responsive regional partners of the national government. There can be no doubt that, just like us here in Bang, the new administration will be looking after the welfare of everyone, not only of those who supported them in the last battle. We also have to strengthen our ties with international community. If you remember, it has been quite controversial a while back because the new regional government is considerably more empowered. Many remain uninformed that they have yet to fully understand what we are capable of. Considering especially that being in government, rightly or wrongly seen by many, and pure and simple as a successful use of power, it has been difficult to consider that we can impact, help, the development of the country as whole by strengthening ties with the international community. Especially with countries we share our culture and faith, we, the country, will realize there is so much to be gained if closer to a parity, even to laboral, international relationship. Let the national government take care of the political issues, but let us contribute in economic and cultural issues and developments. Then we should be able to educate the whole country in the process. Ultimately, the many leaders of the national level who up to now have yet to appreciate the potential of the region and the partner they have been on. The soonest I see that we have not been only doing our best to serve our people, but more than that, doing so much to contribute to the nation's peace. I am confident, the time is near, that the better understanding between and among peoples is almost there. I am confident that indeed, we have done our legacy. In the end, we could not have done anything without our people's faith and confidence. Ladies and gentlemen, it will always be my pride to have known and to be working with Chief Minister Tahud Balawa Ibrahim Al-Aziz. His abdipness as a leader is unequal, and this is shared by all our leaders in government. Ultimately, I will always be honored to have been serving our people, as we all praise and share the blessings of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
And now, we proceed to the State of the Bangsamoro Address by the honorable Chief Minister Tahud Balawa Ibrahim. A'udzubillahiminashishohani raghiim, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillahi wa bihiin asta'in. Was salatu wa salam wa ala sayyidina muhammad wa ala alihi wa sahbihi adzai. To the Wali of the Bangsamoro, Saif Khalifa Nando. Parliament Speaker, Attorney Ali Pangalian Balindong. Colleagues in the parliament, members of the cabinet, friends and partners for peace and development, ladies and gentlemen, my fellow Bangsamoro. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Three years have passed since we, the members of the PTA Parliament, took our oath of moral governance in this August chamber. It was a day filled with hope and dedication to be of genuine service to the people. It was a day when we started navigating the challenging but fulfilling transition period. It was a day that we became the authors of the most important chapters of the Bangsamoro quests for lasting peace and development in our homeland. Since then, we have been working tirelessly in building and running a government we can all proudly call Bangsamoro. Ladies and gentlemen, as we open our session today, let us all reflect at some of the results of the work we have done so far and identify the areas of priority moving forward. The Philippine Statistics Authority recently released the official economic figures of the country for 2021, in which the BARM recorded 7.5% economic growth. This makes us the second fastest-growing region in the country. Moreover, only four regions have surpassed its pre-pandemic economic growth, and we are proud to say that we are one of them, alhamdulillah. In terms of the major industries contribution to the 7.5% economic growth, agriculture, forestry, and fishing contributed the most with 3.0 percentage points, followed by services with 2.6 percentage points and industry with 1.9 percentage points. Speaking of agriculture and fisheries, the PSA also reported that the BARM registered the highest growth in the country in terms of the value of production in agriculture and fisheries at 7.2% in 2021. It is also important to note how these figures relate to the poverty in the region. As I have previously reported in this August chamber, the BARM recorded the most significant decrease in poverty incidence among families over the past three years. From 55.9% in 2018 to 39.4% in 2021. We recorded the highest and the only double-digit reduction in terms of poverty incidence in the whole country. In 2018, 365,900 families are considered poor in the day in ARMF. In 2021, this number is down to 247,000 families, alhamdulillah. However, it is worth mentioning that despite the double-digit reduction at 39.4% poverty incidence, we are still the poorest region in the country. This further reflects that while all things considered, we are heading into the right direction, there are still many development challenges that we need to overcome as a people, as a region, and as an autonomous government. Some of these challenges cannot even be resolved by the BARM alone. It needs strong, continuing support from the national government, the international community, and the local stakeholders. Be that as it may, what is primordial is to ensure that with the challenges and imperfections, we continue to trust forward and achieve major and small wins for the region. Speaking of which, last Thursday, June 9, 2022, the Philippine Airlines launched its maiden flight from Cotabato City to Tawi Tawi. The first ever within BARM route offered by the said airline. It will have return flights every Monday and Thursday with the possibility of increasing the frequency once the demand gets higher. This maiden flight is both historic and symbolic. Apart from it being the first within BARM route offered by PAL, it also partially addresses the perennial connectivity challenge that the autonomous region had to endure for several years. We are hopeful that we will be able to further strengthen the connectivity of our areas and our people. In addition, the Cotabato-Tawi-Tawi flight also signals the realization of the potential of our region for tourism, trade, and business. As the southernmost island welcomes the prospect of more visitors wanting to experience what this beautiful island and its beautiful people has to offer, we are hopeful that the tarnished reputation, often painted with misconceptions and hasty generalization of our region will be replaced with accurate and peace-promoting stories. We invite everyone, especially those who haven't been to our area, be our guests and choose Bangsamoro as your next destination. As we continue, the next chapters of this transition period, let us all work together regardless of color or political affiliation for the betterment of our people and our region. There are still many tasks to be completed, important legislations to be passed, flagship programs and reforms to be implemented under our continuing goal for moral governance. We shall prioritize the passage of the remaining priority codes and other important legislation reflecting the legislative agenda. In addition, in view of the development and contextual changes that the past years have shaped, the government of the day enhanced its 12-point priority agenda for 2023 to 2025. These are the following. Number one, stronger BARM bureaucracy. We shall further promote good governance through enabling policies for transparency, accountability, and improved overall public financial management. We shall also consider alignment of various development plans from different levels of the government to ensure synergy and capacity development. Number two, digital infrastructure and e-governance. We will enhance the availability and accessibility of digitized government functionalities with stronger data privacy and security across the region. Number three, revenue generation and economic comparative advantage. We will prioritize the creation of G O C C and other financial institutions, as well as establishment of economic zones and other initiatives to encourage investments. We shall realize our economic potentials in natural resources, halal industry, ecotourism, among others, that would generate revenues and spur development in the region. Number four, agri-fisery productivity and food security. We shall continue to strengthen food security in the region by improving production and value chain that must be complemented by policies and programs for our farmers and fisher folks. Number five, investment in transportation, communication, and other strategic infrastructure. We shall develop a system of reliable and resilient infrastructure for land, sea, air transportation, and communication that would result to better connectivity and economic growth. Number six, energy security. We need to start the development, exploration, utilization of other energy resources in the region to foster more investments and generate job opportunity for our people. Number seven, social protection and universal healthcare. We shall boast responsiveness and timeliness of social protection services to mitigate vulnerability to economic, social, and environmental shocks and disasters. We shall also improve the equitable access to quality and affordable healthcare services towards a healthy Bangsamoro. Number eight, disaster resilience and climate change adaptation. We will implement responsive policies and programs that would help our vulnerable communities to prevent or withstand disasters, including infectious disease, while implementing holistic approach to mitigate the effect. while implementing holistic approach to mitigate the effects of climate change. Number nine, quality and holistic education. We will improve access to quality and holistic education through human resources, human resource development, skills training, learning continuity programs and education infrastructure projects. Number ten, support to Marawi rehabilitation. We will continue to provide meaningful IDP-centered support to the ongoing rehabilitation, reconstruction and recovery of Marawi City. Number eleven, peace, justice and security. We must sustain the peace in the BARM through stronger coordination and proactive collaboration with law enforcement agencies, development partners and other stakeholders while implementing various peace-building programs. Number twelve, Bangsa Moro culture heritage and diversity. We shall promote our region's rich culture, heritage, history and identity. Through meaningful engagements, we shall also provide spaces for the narrative of the Bangsa Moro to be heard and understood. This 12-point priority agenda shall shape the budget, legislation, programs and policies of our region as we move to the next chapter of the transition period. Ladies and gentlemen, on June 30, 2022, our beloved President Rodrigo Adurdi's term will come to an end. The first ever Mindanao president has consistently exercised a strong political will, profound leadership and love for the people in the past six years. This has been particularly evident in the case of the Bangsa Moro in which, under his term, the passage of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law and the creation of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao were finally realized. In addition, the crucial transition period was also extended for another three years. These are just some of the reasons why we will be forever grateful to President Adurdi. Establishment of the BARM is the Adurdi administration's greatest legacy. As such, I invite everyone to join me in saying both maraming salamat po pag-ulong Adurdi ang koto. As this administration comes to a close, we are optimistic that the incoming administration will continue the gains of the Bangsa Moro peace process, including the transition period. There are still aspects of the peace process that need to be realized or be completed, such as the implementation of the socioeconomic component of the decommissioning process, expansion of private armed groups and other important parts of the normalization process that would help transform the conflict-affected areas of our homeland into peaceful and productive communities. We hope that with the call for unity of President-elect Bongbong Marcos, the successful and complete implementation of the Bangsa Moro peace process will continue to be a priority under his administration. Rest assured that there will be a strong support and collaboration from the Bangsa Moro and the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, especially in this regard, to sustain the peace in our homeland. Ladies and gentlemen, I know today's opening of session may very well be the last one for some of you in this August chamber. In the coming weeks or months, there are possible changes that would shape the next chapters of this transition period. Be that as it may, I want you all to be proud of what you have done in fulfilling our oath to the Almighty and to our people. Granted, there are areas where we could have done better or done things differently, but remember that serving the Bangsa Moro does not stop here. Continue to serve through your own ways, big or small, directly or indirectly. Continue to be an agent of peace that you have always been. Continue to address the social injustices and make the dreams and aspirations of the Bangsa Moro a life reality. Let us all continue to serve the Bangsa Moro with pure hearts and sincere intentions. Wassalamu'alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh Bangsa Moro muna.
Mister, Mister Speaker, that will be all for the opening of the fourth regular session of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament. I move the session to adjourn the speaker. May we request the all members of the Parliament to be in the stage for a particular tutorial time. Mister Speaker, Mister Speaker, I move to adjourn the session. Session be adjourned.
Thank you.